Government Code 54953.3, Ed Code 35145.5. And the district bylaws require that members of the public be provided the opportunity to address the board on any agenda item before or during the board's consideration of the item. You failed to adhere to the law and the board's own bylaws. View on bid number four. You on behalf of the district Board of Education failed to provide the public with an opportunity to address the board on Section D in Business, subsection one, twenty-four, twenty-fifteen, twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, second interim report and budget revisions of the March nine, two thousand and fifteen board agenda. But if you sit A at four minutes fifteen seconds, you allow the board to vote on this item without allowing a public commentary. Government Code 54953.3, Ed Code 35145.5. Through district bylaws require that members of the public be provided the opportunity to address the board on any agenda item before or during the board's consideration of the item. You failed to adhere to the law and the board's own bylaws. To avoid unnecessary litigation within the court, to avoid unnecessary litigation and without admitting any violation of the Brown, of the Ralph, uh, M. Brown Act, the Board of Education hereby unconditionally commits that it will cease, assist, from and not repeat the challenged past action as described in the law. The Board of Education may rescind this commitment only by a majority vote of this membership taken in open session at a regular meeting and notice on its posted agenda as rescission of Brown Act commitment. You will be provided with written notice sent by any means or media you provide in response to this message to whatever address or addresses you specify of any intention to consider rescinding this commitment at least thirty days before any such regular meeting. In the event that this commitment is rescinded, you will have the right to commence legal action pursuant to subdivision A of section five, four, nine, and six of the government code. That notice will be delivered to you by the same means as this commitment or mailed by, or maybe mailed to an address that you have designated in writing very clearly yours, Slena City Elementary School District Board of Education. Be it further resolved that the district superintendent and his designee are authorized to take any other actions necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution. The foregoing resolution was adopted by the governing board of Slena City Elementary School District of Monterey County, California, at a regularly scheduled meeting of the governing board held on June eight, two thousand and fifteen by a vote. And with that, vote.
To me, uh, I want to thank you very much for, um, reading the, uh, the votes. And, uh, Frank Arnold, welcome to, uh, public comment on the resolution. And, uh, have the speaker identify himself and, um, as well, uh, keep it three minutes.
Okay. Sure. Frank Garden, Michigan Park School. Thank you. Um, so I just want to thank you for raising this final, the number. Um, so obviously transparency is really, really, really important to me, um, because I, in my opinion, haven't seen enough of it in my last year. Um, so when we called you on these three or four violations back in March, uh, we did want to speak to the items that were on the agenda. Obviously, we can go back in time and fix that. What's done is done. So this is the only recourse that the public has is to kind of issue a traffic citation of you going too fast. Um, so this is just kind of a, a way to make you slow down. And I think tonight what I've seen is that you've gotten better, so I want to compliment you on that. You opened up, um, public comments on a number of items after a discussion by the board. On the last one, though, was a little questionable. I think it was probably an innocent oversight, but I think Mr. Henry did deserve a response. Rather than putting the motion on the floor, I think what should have happened is there should have been some discussion by the board and then public comment, and then you call for a motion. I just think that's the way it's supposed to go. You know, I've watched enough board supervisor meetings, I mean, go online, and I think they seem to know what they're doing. But in any event, um, I would just want to, wanted to comment on that, that there was no discussion on the last item. I think Mr. Henry was entitled to a response before he took the motion, um, to pass and spike his, his serves retirement. Um, so anyway, hopefully, well, just thank you for not forcing me to take your traffic court.
Mr. Grant?
I've got another resolution.
We're going to close the comments on that and go into a roll call, roll call vote. Uh, your motion?
Excuse me? Do you make motion beside the table?
No, no. Take the motion.
I guess our motion.
Motion.
Move to adopt resolution number.
On for motion, yeah. So move.
Move to adopt resolution number two thousand and fourteen slash fifteen dash thirty-six.
Second.
There's a motion and second discussion. Four numbers. Say none, roll call.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Hoekman?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Aye.
Mr. Larson?
Aye.
Barnes?
Yes.
Five, zero.
Five, zero. Thank you very much. We're going to the next item, which is resolution number two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, dash thirty-six. I mean, thirty-seven, excuse me. You'll find the wording, uh, similar to the previous, uh, resolution. I will move through it rather quickly.
Unconditional commitment letter, whereas government code section five, four, nine, six, oh, point two requires the governing board in adopting an unconditional commitment to cease and desist from violating the Ralph M. Brown Act of proven unconditional commitment by regular or special meeting as a separate item of business in open session and not on its posted agenda. Whereas the governing board received a cease and desist order from Carol M. Rodriguez dated May seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen regarding alleged violations of the Ralph M. Brown Act at the board's May eleventh, two thousand and fifteen meeting, whereas the governing board seeks to comply with government code regarding adopting an unconditional commitment letter, now therefore being resolved that the governing board hereby adopts the following unconditional commitment in response to a letter received from Carol M. Rodriguez dated May seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen to letter part of the resolution to Carol M. Rodriguez. Slena City Elementary School District Board of Education has received your cease and desist letter dated May seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen alleging that the board, alleging that the following past action of the legislative body violates the Brown, uh, Ralph M. Brown Act, excuse me, going too fast there. At the board meeting conducted on May eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, observe the following violations. Two, on behalf of the board to be reported out at in closed session, the board had decided to have their attorney negotiate with S E T C on the matter of the lawsuit. Newspaper report quoted CEO Jerry Strathner saying the board also plans to file appeal much important. This decision was not reported out in open session. To avoid unnecessary litigation without admitting any violation of the Ralph M. Brown Act, the Board of Education hereby unconditionally committed will cease, desist, from and not repeat the challenged past action as described in the law. The Board of Education may rescind this commitment only by a majority vote of this membership taken in open session at a regular meeting and notice on its posted agenda as rescission of Brown Act commitment. You will be provided with written notice sent by any means or media you provide in response to this message to whatever address or addresses you specify of any intention to consider rescinding this commitment at least thirty days before any such regular meeting. In the event that this commitment is rescinded, you will have the right to commence legal action pursuant to subdivision A of section fifty-four, nine, sixty of the government code. That notice will be delivered to you by the same means as this commitment, on the email to an address that you have designated in writing very clearly yours, Slena City Elementary School District Board of Education. Be it further resolved that the district superintendent and his designee are authorized to take any other actions necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution.
Okay. Comment? Public?
Um, a couple of names.
Give me for the record, please.
Carol Rodriguez.
Thank you.
I wrote this letter as president of S E T C, not as a president, you know, citizen. And I think it should reflect that it was as president. Also, I am wondering there, as you can see on there, there's a number two, because there wasn't number one, and it's not showing here, and I don't, I don't have any.
I don't have any information on that one, number one.
There, there were two items.
I thought it was a paragraph, just like.
Some background. Okay. He has the first item, uh, Ms. Rodriguez was, uh, the addressing, oh, the, the teacher resigned from that one district to board production, and later, um, submitted a request to facilitate resignation. And, um, what is concession, the board didn't take any action to that one at all. Just read the letter that they're, is it version ten, as it was, with no action, basically.
Okay, so I, I guess I understand that, and that's how that, um, I didn't.
It's my perspective.
Well, could I just, once I.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I'm just, um, saying that I didn't realize that when I wrote it, but I will say when, you know, the words transparency have flown around this room now for, um, quite a while, that to say no action was taken on item whatever would have been more appropriate, more transparent, just to let people know that you took no action. And I don't think that that, to me, that would be much better way to do it. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes?
I know. Because of the fact that number one is not in here, Mrs. Rodriguez, I, I kind of feel that we need to put this off until the twenty-second and to pass it then with the information, because it's missing number one, which is part of your, um, request.
Right. And if I, you know, found the name with.
And, right, we could do that as well. But I, I would, I would recommend that we, we do this on the twenty-second.
You're recommending to, um, table it for the.
To table it.
Thanks for the meeting.
With the, with the additional one.
Okay. So, guys. Everybody's in agreement? Ms. Larson?
Yes.
Yes. You can vote. Here's what you, okay. The next regular meeting. Thank you. Oh, we're on the first one.
Pardon? Pardon?
No, the declaration.
Declaration. There's a resolution.
And a resolution.
For the re- appreciation. And basically, this is a standard resolution to appreciate the services of all our employees who are retiring from twenty-one years to thirty-eight years. You have the list there?
Sorry, I don't have the list.
The board need to take action that is, we do have a resolution of acknowledgement, standard of acknowledgement to our employees.
Okay.
First and second. Number five.
It's not in the board package.
No, it's not in the.
No. I am sorry. I think I stepped the podium too soon, so there needs to be board action on recognizing the retiring teachers before I take the, bring the next item to you. I'm sorry.
Resolution was present, we're going to be waiting until next. The next meeting.
The application recommends that the board approve the resolution twenty-fourteen, fifteen, twenty-six, through thirty-two, twenty-fourteen, fifteen, thirty-four, and thirty-five.
Okay. Yes. First and second.
Are they here?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm really sorry.
No, 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 just don't worry.
Okay, res- um, resolution of appreciation for.
Or at least our employees.
All right. This is, um, this is the resolution of appreciation that will be sent to the retiring teachers that are listed on the agenda. And the resolution reads this way. Whereas Mrs. Jeanette Thorpe, a teacher at Camp Elementary School, has been a valuable employee of the Slena City Elementary School District from September one, nineteen eighty-eight to June sixth, two thousand and fifteen, a period of twenty-seven years of service. And whereas Ms. Jeanette Thorpe has long been recognized as an outstanding employee and citizen at this community, and whereas Ms. Jeanette Thorpe has served the district faithfully and well, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the Slena Elementary School District expresses its appreciation for the services of this board and its best wishes for well-earned and happy retirement. The foregoing resolution is passed and adopted by the Board of Education of the Slena Elementary School District of Monterey County, California, at the regular board meeting the eighth day of June of two thousand and fifteen.
With all due respect, I'm going to ask Ms. Barnes to read the rest of the.
Yes.
Read out the names.
Just.
Why do you? Yes, sir. There is three minutes. That the board approved resolution twenty-fourteen, fifteen, twenty-six, as the follows employees.
All right. Besides Ms. Jeanette Thorpe, the Board of Education would like to recognize with the following resolution. Whereas Mrs. Maria Delva, a resource specialist, yeah, at Laurelwood Elementary School, has been a valuable employee of the Slena City Elementary School District from September one, nineteen eighty to June fifth, two thousand and fifteen, a period of thirty-five years. And ask would the board like me to read each resolution or identify.
We're trying to do this.
Thank you.
It's like.
Goodness, goodness, okay, all right.
It is a boss kind of slot.
Thank you. I know, I know. You're going to have to do a, agenda items are linked with the board meeting. Okay.
Okay.
But we would like to honor Ms. Roberta Sammixon, who is teaching, who is retiring from Kennedy School and has been with us for a period of twenty-eight years. Would like to recognize Verena Shaw, who is.
Yeah.
Verena has been with us for thirty-eight years, and Verena, I want to thank you for all you've done for the students. And I'd like to recognize Ms. Sophia DeCosta, who has been with us for thirty-six years. We had Cheryl Fields, who is a classified supervisor at food service, who has been with us for twenty-one years. Penelope Emel has been a teacher in the district for thirty years. Kristis Tabaska has been a teacher in our district for thirty-six years. And Nick Belli has been a teacher in our district for thirty-seven years.
Motion to. We'll give it at ten o'clock, click, you know. Okay, if there is a motion on the floor. Okay, there is. Before that, we'd like to have a, your name, please, to comment.
I'll be very grateful. Frank Garden, Michigan Park School. Um, you know, I, I just feel like if you've been here, uh, with this district for thirty-eight years, thirty-seven years, if you started in the seventies and early eighties, that, um, I kind of feel like I wish we could bring this to the forefront of your board meeting, um, as we do with the children, because to, to receive an award at ten o'clock at night, it just seems like it's not enough. Maybe, maybe you might consider to be acknowledgement of the night board meeting, so that the folks who aren't here tonight can actually receive it and do a talk of it.
We're going to get a, a really cool festival. Okay, there is a motion on the floor, and there's a second. Table it. Ms. Black?
There you go.
Yeah. Second by the side.
Larry Small? Yes. Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Hopeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Five, zero.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yes, I'll bring you to you the, uh, declaration of need for fully qualified educators. I view to bring this to the board this past probably five years, and what this does is does, it does provide a vehicle for us to properly credential teachers who, for instance, may be returning to the teaching profession after being gone for a while and not have applied. It also allows us to, uh, fully credential, um, teachers who are working on their bilingual, uh, be clad, credentialed, and may have passed all the tests except one section. Gives us another year for them to completely pass the test, and, um, the same with special ed. And so this is a vehicle to have in place at this point in time, so that we can make sure that everyone is fully credentialed with a coming here.
Thank you very much. Uh, do you have any questions on the board? But before that, the public vote, none of the public, the board members, some questions? Maybe I can, I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve declaration of need for fully qualified educators.
Yes. There's a motion, Larson, Ms. Black, second by Ms. Barnes. Okay, any discussion? Say none? All of the favor? Aye.
Five, zero.
Five, zero. Thank you very much. And the next item was the resolution. Resolution, uh, twenty-fourteen, fifteen, dash thirty-three, classified layout.
Thank you. Uh, actually, you saw many of the positions that, uh, will be impacted by this resolution in the L cap presentation. It, it, it sounds like a, um, kind of a backwards way to approach, uh, creating new positions, but let me explain that we currently have, um, homework assistants that are in positions of two hours or one hour for lunch hour. We want to expand that to three or three and a half hours, so that we have coverage. In order to do that, we need to eliminate those current two-hour positions to create three or three and a half hour positions. Um, you heard prior that what we're trying to do is, is have more consistency with our classified positions and our classified staff by creating longer positions, so that people don't have to put together four positions in order to have six or eight hours. So what we are, we've already started discussions with C S E A, and we believe that we are going to minimize the impact of eliminating these two-hour positions, because we will be looking at offering the three and three and a half hour positions to the current employees. So that's, that's the story on the office. Um, the office clerk one positions we created actually this year as a way of trying to provide additional help in our school offices is an entry level position. It, um, we are, we are proposing to eliminate those positions because we are creating, um, additional hours for our Ibis clerks, so that we will have better coverage for a longer period of time in the school office. So.
Good. Do you have any?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Questions on the, Dr. Lusa? I'm going to be asking if any public members.
Joe.
Say done? Okay. Another go? This is good? Okay. It's in progress, that's what you're saying.
Yes, it is.
It's in progress. Okay, so the final bottom line is going to be brought back to the board to authorize it.
No, this is, no.
This is it?
With this, with this resolution, you're authorizing us, you're authorizing the layoff, the elimination of those positions.
Okay.
You're authorizing and directing me to go back and negotiate the act, and I'm sharing that we brought the story to that process.
It's almost ten thirty. No, I'm sorry, it's ten o'clock right now. Thank you for clarification. Okay, I'm, I'm going to.
Before, before we go, may I make a motion that we extend the time for fifteen minutes? Ten o'clock is when we're supposed to come?
Ten thirty.
Oh, ten thirty? I'm sorry. Okay, I won't make the motion, but I did want to make one comment, and thank you very much. When I first saw this, I, I talked to Mrs. Williams, and I said, wait, you're, you're letting people go on what's going on, so thank you for the clarification, and thank you for supporting that. So I'm making a motion.
A motion by Ms. Barnes to accept the resolution, and the resolution is numbered.
Two thousand and fourteen.
Fourteen, fifteen, dash thirty-one, uh, classified layout. Okay, uh, do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second, yes. Okay, any discussion? Uh, it's a roll call.
It's a roll call. Invited up here?
Yes.
Mr. Hopeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes?
Five, zero.
Okay. Next item. Next item is under business, resolution two fourteen, fifteen, dash twenty-five, certifying non-use of housing community development trailers for. This is a requirement by the state, uh, agency, I can't remember which one it was now, uh, in order for us to comply with a bill, and we are in compliance, so I'm just going to read the resolution, we're going to make this quick. We are in compliance, we have none of these, we haven't had any for the fourteen years I've been here, I think the last one went fourteen years ago. In the matter of compliance with this, uh, bill, thirteen twenty-four, chapter three oh eight, statutes of two thousand and six, education code seventeen, two ninety-two, resolution certifying housing and community development H T D trailers are no longer getting used for school purposes. Whereas S P thirteen twenty-four was enacted into law on September eighteenth, two thousand and six, and requires that commencing on September thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, any H T D approved relocatables outlined in section seventeen, two ninety-two be removed from use as school buildings. And whereas the resolution must be approved by the school district governing board by October thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, certifying that any H T D relocatables outlined in section seventeen, two ninety-two of the education code have been removed from use as a school building from September thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. Now therefore, the Board of Education adopts the following resolution, disallowing the governing board of Slena City Elementary School District certified, say for a third time, to the state allocation board that any H T D relocatable, outlined in section seventeen, two ninety-two of Ed Code have been removed from use as school buildings. So it is the, uh, state allocation board and the funding agency pursuing. Okay? Any public comment? Board discussion? I'm open for a motion.
Motion approved, resolution, uh, two thousand and fourteen slash fifteen dash twenty-five.
A motion on the table, and there's a second on, there was Mr. Kim, second. Okay. Any comment? Oh, it's getting a roll call, I'm sorry. Hold up. For the vote.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Hopeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Barnes?
Aye.
Next item. Is a paid school meals price changes.
That's mine also. Director of Food, Terry Ryan, Director of Food Service. Uh, this is something we are now doing every year in order to be in compliance with the U S D A requirements of the, uh, section two of five, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of two thousand and ten. It's basically a business activity. Uh, the city government currently pays us a dollar ninety-three cents for every free meal served in our district, and three dollars and six cents for every free luncheon served in the district. They're saying, if that's what they're paying us for those meals, for the free, uh, students, then we must have our paid pricing within a certain percentage of that, of that, uh, reimbursement that we get from the fed. It's currently, we're, uh, charging a dollar fifty for breakfast, and we're, and we're charging two sixty for lunch. This action that I'm requesting tonight is if your approval, then we raise breakfast by ten cents, uh, lunch by ten cents, and that we, while we're at it, we're going to raise the administrative, uh, I'm sorry, the, uh, cost of an adult meal from three dollars to three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Okay.
If we don't, if you don't raise it ten cents for the paid students, which is about ten percent of our meals, then the general fund, not the food service fund, the general fund has to reimburse the, the food service fund that I'm on. It's just when the U S D A keeps it, they call it, and we make sure that the paid prices are real close to the reimburse price.
Okay. Okay, you have any, uh, study the options? Want to speak to the session? No? Okay, I'm open for a motion.
All right, question.
Second, any questions?
Did the U S D A just increase their, their K I N, or did they?
They go there. Okay. So we make, so we relax for a moment, and then they come back and say, make sure your equity is where it's supposed to be, because we're the last one.
So about ten percent of the meals are reserved, you are paid?
Yeah.
Motion of God. Is that a roll call? No, not a roll call.
No.
Okay, I had a motion on the floor, and a second. Motion, Mr. Kim, Kim, Mr. Larson, Mr. Larson, uh, second motion. All of the favor, any discussion first? Okay, all of the favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Enemies, names? None.
Thank, thank you for your.
Yeah. Um, our next, uh, regular meeting will be, uh, June twenty-second.
Uh, the birthday?
It's thirty, yes, sir.
And I would like to request that we have a special, for meeting, for.
Whereas S P thirteen twenty-four was enacted into law on September eighteen, two thousand and six and requires that commencing on September thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, any H T D approved relocatable outlined in section seventeen two ninety-two be removed from use as school building. And whereas the resolution must be approved by the school district governing board by October thirtieth, twenty fifteen, certified that any H T D relocatable as outlined in section seventeen two ninety-two of the education code have been removed from use as a school building commencing September thirtieth, twenty fifteen. Now therefore, the Board of Education adopts the following resolution. It is offered to the governing board of Selenas City Elementary School District certified, to the state allocation board that any H T D relocable as outlined in section seventeen two ninety-two of that code have been removed from use as school buildings. So it is the state allocation board and the funding agency.
Okay? Any public comment? Board discussion? I'm open for a motion.
Motion approved, resolution, uh, two thousand fourteen slash fifteen dash twenty-five.
Sorry, the motion on the seat, on table, and there's a second on the table. Mr. Kim, second. Okay. Any comment? It's a roll call, I'm sorry. All the, all the...
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Aye.
Mr. Marison?
Aye.
Ms. Barnes?
Aye.
Next item? Is a paid school meals price changes.
That's mine also. Director of Food, Karen Ryan, Director of Food Service. This is something we are now doing every year in order to be in compliance with the U S D A requirements of the, uh, section two of about the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of two thousand and ten. It's basically a business activity. Uh, the, the government currently pays us a dollar ninety-three cents for every free meal served in our district and three dollars and six cents for every free luncheon served in the district. They're saying if that's what they're paying us for those meals for the free students, then we must have our paid pricing within a certain percentage of that, of that reimbursement that we get from the feds. It's currently, we're, uh, charging a dollar fifty for breakfast and we're, and we're charging two sixty for lunch. This action that I'm requesting tonight is your approval that we raise breakfast by ten cents, uh, lunch by ten cents, and that we, while we're at it, we're going to raise the administrative, uh, I'm sorry, the cost of an adult meal from three dollars to three dollars and seventy-five cents. If we don't, if you don't raise it ten cents for the paid students, which is about ten percent of our meals, then the general fund, not the food service fund, the general fund has to reimburse the food service fund that money. It's just when the U S D A keeps it, they call it equity, make sure that the pay prices are real close to the reverse price.
Okay. Okay, you have any, suddenly the audience wants to speak to the station? No? Okay, I'm open for a motion. Second, any questions?
Did the U S D A just increase their, their kicking or anything?
They, they go to you.
Okay.
So we make, so we relax a moment and then they come back and say, make sure your equity is where it's supposed to be because we're always the last to go.
So about ten percent of the meals are reserved, you're paid?
Yeah.
Motion of God. Is there a roll call? No, not a roll call.
No.
Okay, any motion on the floor? A second. Motion, Mr. Kim, Kim, Mr. Larson, Mr. Larson, second motion. All of the favor, any discussion first? Okay, all of the favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any needs, names? None.
Thank, thank you for your...
Our next regular meeting will be on June twenty-second.
It's thirty, yes, sir. I would like to request to have a special board meeting for the item that we pull up on the agenda. It has to be done like this week or early next week. I understand you will be having a special board meeting, you say, the sixteen?
Saturday, yeah, Tuesday, sixteen, five thirty.
So that would be, I, we have to address that issue also, you say, sixteen, special board meeting at five thirty.
Lydia? Do you hear back, please?
Yes, that's mine.
June sixteen, five thirty. Special board meeting.
Yeah, alright. June sixteen, five thirty. You guys, the superintendent? Fireman's based on the lawsuit and President. So that will go to... Twenty seconds. Hereby adjourned at ten oh eight. Hello?
I was wondering who that was across from...